Yeah, so she doesn't do the long walks anymore. So I end up doing the white dog first, and then I bring her out.
Yeah.
And give it a little short. But yeah.
Family's good. Jacob just decided to raise blue school, so that's kind of like they should part off.
Where they don't.
He's gonna go to Hilldale.
Oh, cool.
This is happy news? Yeah, oh, yeah. That's where my husband's daughter is. All right, I can't forget this together.
All right, are we ready? All the meetings are on there?
Yeah, for some reason.
We're recording, we're. Okay. Cool, I will go ahead and just read the planning, the announcement. We'd like to acknowledge that we are on a traditional land of rich and diverse group of native peoples. We've called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor gratitude, the land itself, and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. Okay, did everybody get a chance to peek at the agenda? No, no surprises there. Okay, cool. And then the meeting minutes from just last Thursday, were there any issues, edits, concerns, make sense to everyone?
I did have one that page five, line seven. It says Commissioner Lamonti said that affordable housing should be a little bit any income bracket, so I don't know what I said. But that's definitely not what I meant, so.
Yeah.
I meant that it should be open to income parameters should qualify people for. For affordable housing, so for example, section eight housing vouchers, I did up it, you have to have 50% of people in income level, so.
Yeah.
Affordable housing should be linked to income parameters.
Yeah, okay. I think that totally drives, I remember you saying that too, so. Didn't think that edit, but we'll adjust that. Anybody else?
I'll admit with the shorter, I'm fairly scared, so.
No problem, these ones, they they read well, they check with. Yeah.
I actually signed up for a little.
Yeah, actually they get a little bit homework, yeah. Yeah, you can pull it apart, so it's cool. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes with the edit online 15 page three?
So.
Second. Second. Top favor. Hi. Thank you. Hey Melissa. Alrighty. So our next meeting is May eighth for our special meeting. And then May fourteenth following that, do you have any conflicts with those dates, the eighth versus? Yeah.
Wednesday.
Well, instead she has problems on Thursday, so I bet she's liked her maybe. It's gonna be a full house.
So it said that.
And then the next one is the fourth. Yeah. The issues with that one.
That one's, is that virtual?
Actually, I may, yeah, this is the one I may late. Or actually, why?
Suppose that's the reasonable. Cool, okay, so.
Absolutely, I'll confirm with Chair in regard to this.
Anybody else, or we're all gonna be here, edit it? Alrighty. Do we have any, any public comments, anyone online that?
We have any attendees.
Just our lovely consultants?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
Awesome. Okay. So last meeting, Deputy Mayor Bodie, you shared a handful of updates that lovely sign code update's gonna go in front of the city council, so that's great. There's adopted Lakefront Park master plan. Was there anything else you wanted to chat about today? For about an update for?
Uh, no, there hasn't been anything else to, that I need to update you on, so the council's meeting on Thursday, but nothing new to report today.
How's your neck?
Oh, well, it looks a little bit like Frankenstein was working on my neck. But I'm doing better, I just decided to do this from, from home tonight because you know, I don't, I don't think anyone wants to look at my neck, to be honest, it's kind of a little gruesome looking, so.
Because they're actually, you can't see anything, so.
But yes, I'm doing well, thank you.
Old business, which still feels like new business, is all things housing today. And then I think you're trying to break the record, the longest PDF ever sent, so we add like, we add like fifteen pages to this version. With the climate element, so if, if time allows, we'll do housing, transportation, and climate too.
If it allows, at least several verbal update. Cool, some more mature, and yeah.
Okay. Awesome, well, should we pass it on over to our consultants?
Alright, good evening commissioners, yeah, nice to see you all again, I know that there's been some changes on the, on the commission, is my understanding, but I think, looks like all familiar faces, and it's been a little while since we've spoken together. But yes, all things housing, as you said, and I know you all were discussing all things housing last week as well, we got a brief update from, from Mark yesterday, just on some of the, the key topics that you guys had discussed, and so we prepared a few brief materials to touch on some of those question marks that you all had. But then I'm also hoping that, because of your discussion last week, as we go through the discussion guide that we prepared for you and the brief presentation we have, you all can sort of jump in and flag certain points of discussion, the, the things that you, you make, you want to to make a point about, or that you feel we need to discuss, so we'll keep things sort of fluid. I imagine we'll sort of hop around between this presentation we have and some of the other materials we've shared with you, I know there was a lot. So hopefully we can get through, through all of it, because it's a big topic today. I guess really briefly before I, I hop in, I'll do some quick reintroductions, I'm David Fisk, the associate with Leland Consulting Group and project manager from our side for, for this work. Andrew Oliver on my team here, I know you all have met. And Jennifer Shook is, is new to, to you all, she helped out a lot with our, our middle housing work that was sent your way, so if we could, we'd, we get the whole team together here, in case you guys have any, any questions, so we can, we can tag team it, so. Um, the, the other thing I'll mention before hopping right in, just hearing you all chat around the table seemed a little difficult on some of the sound. It seemed when people were speaking a bit louder, it came through clear, I'd hate for, for technical issues to get in the way of our discussion today, so just wanted to sort of flag that from the top, and hopefully we don't have any, any major issues. Um, alright, with that, I'm gonna pull up some slides to sort of get us going here, unless there's any, any questions or things from, from your end before I do that.
No, I think we're, we're good, we'll just take a note to speak a little bit louder for you.
Thank you, I, I do appreciate that.
Yeah, we can hear you good though.
Good, okay. Um, it's looking like, so I, I don't have screen sharing capabilities, and host disabled participant screen sharing. There we go. Alright, so for tonight's agenda, should be no surprise for you, we just wanted to make, make clear from the top, right, so we're, we're really reviewing two pieces of work with you all here. The, the main topic of discussion is the, the comp plan update, the housing element. But due to our past discussions, and of course, the, the necessary and ongoing work around middle housing that is relevant to that policy, goal and policy discussion and the, the entire element. We wanted to bring those here together, but it's important to note that that is the work around House Bill eleven ten and middle housing code updates is under a separate grant and separate piece of work where this is by no means the last last chance to weigh in on, on that, but sort of this preliminary feasibility assessment that we, we conducted I think has some, some important points to be made that are relevant to the policy discussion, so. We'll be going through just an overview of the element objectives, objectives and getting to the housing goals and policies. I know, related to the middle housing, I think, just looking through some of the minutes from last week's discussion and Mark had mentioned that he did update you on some of the, the trailer bill. Additions to, from House Bill twenty-three twenty-one that make some, some changes to, well, some of the recommendations or pieces of analysis that we made, but also just how cities have to implement House Bill eleven ten, so we'll touch on that again briefly as well, and then hopefully we can get to the bigger discussion around middle housing as well. So with the housing element, just as a reminder, right, big piece of this is to satisfy GMA requirements, especially a lot of the, the new requirements under House Bill twelve twenty. But then also regional and county level policy. The PS, PSRC Vision twenty fifty, Metropolitan Planning Policies as well as King County Planning Policies. But then ultimately, this is your local vision document, right, so that's why it's really important we go through this process for not just cutting and pasting regional policy direction and putting it in your comp plan. So, you know, a lot of the discussion here tonight, I think, is hinged around this, this some, somewhat tension of priorities around community vision of wanting to balance environmental stewardship, housing affordability, and your neighborhood tree canopy, which is so sort of vital and cherished in, in Lake Forest Park. And so I think a lot of the discussion is how, how do we balance those things when it comes to housing? But also looking to support diverse cultures and perspectives, vibrant town centers is really at the heart of Lake Forest Park, and ultimately trying to support and create safe and connected neighborhoods now and into the future. From the GMA, these are the requirements and, and to this point that we have sort of fulfilled all of these, aside from you know, further revisions and discussion that we have tonight and ongoing. But we, we have conducted a housing needs assessment for you all that we reviewed together last November. Goals, policies, and objectives are our discussion tonight. The residential land capacity analysis, which had been conducted and we shared previously, that sort of led to a lot of these policy updates. Provisions for all economic segments, this is a new requirement under the updated GMA, as well as addressing racially disparate impacts, exclusion, and displacement risk, and so that we also included in the packet of materials was that racially disparate impacts evaluation that we, we shared with all of you. And sort of building off of that, PSRC and countywide planning policies, further the requirements or breakdowns of your, your housing targets, needing to plan for various income bands, right, which is very important when we talk about the middle housing in ADUs, as these are, are housing options that can provide choice for, for groups from various income and needs. And also the need to include policies that explicitly address past or, or present racially disparate impacts is made very strong through, through regional and county policy guidance. And so you'll see, and I'm sure you did in reviewing the, the draft goals and policies, a number of language adjustments that sort of reflect these these requirements, both from the, the region and county, and some from the state as well. So before we hop right into the discussion topics, just wanted to speak to a few things that Mark brought to our attention that, you know, we knew you, you asked about during your discussion on Thursday. So I think one of the new policies that was included was specifically stating exploring options for, for renters stability. There were some questions about what that could look like, I think there is an open question on whether this is something Lake Forest Park wants to, wants to take on, or has the capacity to sort of take on or manage these types of programs or tools. But, but more often cities partner with, with housing authorities or the regional partners to, to help implement some of these, but so when we're talking about renters stability or protections, these are some of the options that we were, we were, would refer to, so providing tenant counseling, and assistance, and landlord education. Support homeowner assistance, this can be financial support. Incentivizing early childhood education centers, medical care, and other community-serving commercial uses in mixed-use development to ease the burden on, on childcare and, and tran, traveling and commuting for these services. Using voluntary or mandatory incentives to include affordable housing in all new development, especially in proximity to transit and higher opportunity areas, which can, can, can lower overall household costs for, for those that are living in those areas. And a tool that many of your, your neighbors and other jurisdictions use is the multifamily tax exemption. And potential to broaden that or implement it in all areas near frequent transit where allowed under state law, so this is not, you know, a wholly comprehensive list necessarily of, of renter protections or stability tools, but just some of the, the options we wanted to, to to present to you as, as examples, and we can have further discussion on that tonight. Also just wanted to point out, some of these are mentioned in the discussion guide, but in our earlier conversations many months ago, I know there was a lot of interest in understanding beyond housing choice and and, and types and affordability, what are some of the options the city can pursue to support affordable homeownership options in the city, so. From a regulatory standpoint, there are development incentives, of course, that can be put in place around height, density, FAR, that would, are often given in exchange for inclusion of affordable units, the tool that's often used, middle housing itself, the, just through the market, allowing smaller units to be built, which are typically priced less than a new single-family home. And also fee simple lot splits, which some, some new regulations make this easier and require cities to, to do it under certain circumstances. Which can enable wealth building by facilitating the sale of a detached unit on the same lot as a primary dwelling. So these are things that your regulations can support homeownership. Then other actions that, that usually require more partnership, also more resources. Land acquisition, if you really want to preserve housing affordability or, or develop it, or provide some resources towards developing it, so the purchasing of land, or as well as purchasing or providing funds for the acquisition of lands to be put into a community land trust. Of course partnerships with your affordable home builders, again, through potentially the provision of land, money, or services. A city could consider developing a housing trust fund to, to have a pool of resources to put towards affordable homeownership or affordable housing more generally. And also considerations around waivers or reductions in, in fees that can support the, the or lower the costs of production of affordable housing. So, these are some of the topics we can discuss further, and then maybe, maybe you're getting a little more into the implementation side of things, but I know it was an area that you all were, were interested in, in learning more about or discussing more, so. And the, the last bit before we all, all stop talking, we can get to the discussion pieces are, I think there were questions around specifically, what, what is permanent supportive housing and emergency housing when we talk about the, the need to, requirements to allow that. And so there's actually, under this new House Bill twenty-three twenty-one, there was some new definitions around both of them, so the language is here, just to, to clarify. So permanent supportive housing, and some examples here in the region. Is subsidized leased housing with no limit on length of stay, that prioritizes people who need comprehensive support services to retain tenancy. Utilizes in admissions practices designed to use lower barriers to entry than would be typical for other rental housing, and it is paired with onsite or offsite voluntary services, and I think that's an important thing that some people often misunderstand, it's not that people are forced to, to use services in most cases to live in, in permanent supportive housing. In comparison to emergency housing, which is defined as temporary indoor accommodations for individuals or families who are homeless or at imminent risk of becoming homeless, and that is intended to address basic health, food, clothing, and personal hygiene needs. And they may include day and warming centers that do not provide overnight accommodations. So sort of as the name name says, right, a lot more temporary and for, for folks in an emergency situation. So, sure, there might be other questions around those. Wanted to just now end on, these are sort of the three major topic items that we put out there around the housing element, and these relate specifically to the goal and policy language. So, supply and diversity, form and scale, and affordability, where some of the, were sort of major changes were made to existing policy language. And I'm hoping you all have that discussion guide in front of you, and notes and thoughts from your discussion on Thursday, so I will sort of pause there, if there are any questions about what I just discussed, or if we want to hop right into the first item in the discussion guide and, and start talking through the housing element itself, I think we should do that.
Well, let's, let's go for it.
Okay. So, um do we want to pull up the, the element itself and, and look through that here on the screen, would that be helpful? Or the, or the discussion guide? Think, there's a lot of, a lot of prompts in there, and we can, we can sort of go through them one by one, if you think that's the most efficient way to do it, I don't want to repeat discussion items, maybe that you guys have already sorted out on your end, so.
Yeah, that'd be a good, good plan to start there.
Okay. So. Okay, so for housing, there you go. Goals and policies. Are you all able to see that?
Better, yeah.
I know it's, yeah, a little small, like a word document, so housing supply and diversity, I think you know, the major questions we had for you were word choice and intention behind these policies, you know, many of the updates that were made in there were made to, to better align with state and regional county requirements. But it's important that these also meet your local object, local goals and objectives, so. Was there anything that was missing, or any other policies that you feel we should consider, or any language choices that you felt were in need of discussion in these policies?
Oh, we haven't discussed about that options table, but it's a few pages down.
We did. Page eight. Yeah, page five, if we, if we could maybe jump to some of the things that we spent our time on. Page five of your memo about the four options we have for middle housing.
Okay, let's see.
So we talked about on Thursday was we can cross out option one and four, and we're looking really at options two and three. And Yanni had some suggestions, and his whole part was that he's gonna take it take it home and maybe come up with some alternative language, but I think what our question was for you guys was how you came up with those specific areas, assuming it was mostly around the transportation locations, or if there was something else that that you wanted to add to that, as to why two and three kind of shook out the way they did.
Yeah, and I think, so I'll, I'll hop back to the presentation real quick and hand it over to you, Andrew, if you wanted to discuss that, we prepared a couple of slides to, to dive into that a bit more.
Yeah, sure. So, in the middle housing report, which was, I know there were so many pages of packets, so yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if you got all the way down to that, which is totally understandable, but in the middle housing report, there was a sort of discussion of, of, of where we came up with those areas, and so we put a couple of slides to sort of outline that process here. The first thing we did was to split the single-family zones into a few areas based on similar characteristics in those areas, so things we looked at were critical areas, you know, what, what sort of zones or parts of zones you know, were encumbered by the most slope or creeks or wetlands. And then we looked at proximity to transit, as you said there, so yeah, certainly that transit buffer around the future BRT line. And then, and this was sort of perhaps more interesting in a way, we looked at lot orientation and size, so in a number of these zones, there's quite different types of lots, you know, there's more of a grid in the southern part of, of the city, north of the cemetery there, contrasting with more cul-de-sacs and disconnected streets up in the north part of town. And then, of course, along the creek in the RS twenty zone, both areas of RS twenty zone, there's, there's a lot of very long and deep parcels with a lot of tree cover and slope, so we, we looked at example parcels in a number of areas in that report. And we profiled the types of existing housing on those parcels, and then the types of things you, you know, might be able to consider what would, could fit on those parcels as far as middle housing typologies go, so would it be a duplex or a fourplex, what kind of you know, a cottage development, what kind of thing could you fit on there within the constraints of critical areas? Tree cover and a lot size, accessibility, et cetera. So there's a couple of examples here, you can see on the right, there's five of these areas that we analyzed in the report to look at sort of the differences between these parts of town, and we also profiled the, these different zone areas based on what was already on the ground, is there existing middle housing there, is there lot sizes that are smaller or larger than the allowed or minimum lot size, are there non-conforming uses, et cetera? And if you're on the next slide, one thing we found, as you can see on the right here, is that in the southern part of, of Lake Forest Park, there's quite a few lots that already exceed the minimum lot coverage of thirty-five percent in the RS seven point two zone, so. That was interesting because it gave an indication that there's, you know, that, that what, the, a slight increase in a lot in allowing more development on the lot, could open up a lot of opportunities for middle housing in this area, and it's also near transit, and it's already happening, as we can see here, there's already a lot of lots where where there's structures that are, that are larger than covering thirty-five percent of the lot, and finally on the left, we looked at some walk sheds. This map shows how many minutes it takes to walk to the nearest retail area, obviously closer to town center, it's darker, meaning it takes less time. There's considerably less accessibility over in the shoreline side of town with the slopes and everything. We looked at walk, walking to schools and to transit and parks as well, and so this sort of aggregated together to, to create the map in, in the next slide there, David. That, you know, obviously proximity to transit is important, obviously walkability is important, those things kind of coincide, but also those smaller lots and the opportunity to potentially change a little bit of the lot coverage allowance and, and get a lot of middle housing opportunities because of the configuration, there's less slope, there's Of the lot coverage allowance and and get a lot of middle housing opportunities because of the configuration, there's less slope, there's fewer trees. But in in the green area, and then in the yellow area, that's sort of our second tier of of recommended areas. To consider for potentially allowing more middle housing. And although there's the creeks and and streams there. It also, some of those lots are really large and with sort of innovative ideas. Around, you know, maintaining the integrity of of tree canopy and critical areas, there's still a lot of space to consider. Potentially increasing a little bit more middle housing density in those areas. So that was sort of the process we took to come up with those two recommended. Sets of parcels, and then they are aligned with the current zoning boundaries. For the most part, to to try to keep it easier. So. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Andrew, on the, on the mapping, that exercise that you did, was that strictly distance to? Transit or you said a commercial areas that like, was there any overlay with? Sidewalks or or safe passage, just that's kind of a known. I didn't hear the community, a lot of the areas that you show as being very walkable are. Not super walkable for lack of sidewalks or for. You know, for lines of sight and other factors that make it not safe.
Yeah, this is from. A scenario planning tool that we use called Urban Footprint that it, it. Well, it purports to take into account sidewalks. I mean, when we looked at this, we also thought the same thing. So I guess we have to take it with somewhat of a grain of salt. It is more than just the, it's based on more than just. Straight proximity, though. But I think it's making sort of generous assumptions about. About sidewalk, you know, safety, certainly in some areas.
I think the point I would make when I saw this map that I thought was interesting, you know, it's minutes to retail and it may be. So few places along Ballenger that are maybe zone retail, but the retail is like an auto repair shop.
Right.
That's open three days a week, a pizza place that's open. Part of one day during the work week, like only one day a week and a daycare center. And other than that, there's really no retail in that dark red corridor before you get down to five twenty-two.
Yeah, I think that the, the, the more, the more important takeaway is that. The key thing is the proximity to to the town center, I think, and. And also. That it coincides with, with the sort of transit accessibility.
Yeah, the other map that's not shown here, but in the report is that proximity to transit, which is a more. More important than proximity to retail in this, this regard potentially.
I guess I would just add that I think part of what we're. This does help us identify is where we might, I mean, we're, we're developing a forward looking plan, right? We're trying to look at what, where do you want things to go in the next one years? So if we make some decisions that do direct some higher density along safe boundary. That should kind of turn up the heat also on making sure that we have, you know, safer ways. I don't think we can base our decisions just on what's on the ground now, when you think about where we're headed and where we think we should be. Because then that, that would be a really good tool to have for prioritizing investments and things like walks and whatnot. It's like, hey, we're. We're promoting more this year, those need to be important areas. I wasn't, and I had all the same questions, but I wasn't too worried about it. This, I was thinking more about this, the geography, like, yeah, Bowler and. Both seem like potential options to direct some more choices. I wanted to share that since you're on this slide, it's perfect, that the thing we talked about. You know, we were kind of like, well, probably options two or three, we need to talk more about those, you know, we didn't land on one or the other, but we don't like. It wasn't number one or number four. The addendum that I suggested that I kind of wrote a sentence about is that. I think there's a one category of middle housing, specifically kind of cottage scale, not necessarily exactly. Cottage housing development, but cottage scale homes. That frankly could be appropriate, potentially in any of the RS zones potentially. And what I wanted to propose was that we consider incentives, right? Whether it's density incentives. Fee incentives, whatever the incentives are, that type of housing is it could be appropriate anywhere. And it seems like a category that. I'm hearing from a lot of people, they feel like that's something we're really missing or small. But small, but individual, you know, structure, but they're accessible for seniors. So I wrote up a sentence, I'm sure Mark can forward it. Read it for the record, since by the type of thing who's sharing with the commission tonight. And this is this draft language, so we don't need to pick it apart. I just wanted something advice. Say in all RS zones, consider density incentives and or other incentives such as fee exemptions for building. Small scale detached housing such as cottage housing or similar in scale and form. For example, and again, this is just to illustrate allow double density. So let's say four units were two would otherwise be allowed. So that's something I wanted to have just in our discussion. We didn't have a deep talk about it or agree on it, rather than say this might be a compliment to options two and three. That spans. Many more areas for that type of. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think, well, we certainly have, I guess, some, some thoughts related to that certain suggestion. You know, and I don't, I don't know if others on the mission want to, to chime in or have a response to that.
Love to hear your thoughts.
Well, so I mean, I think, you know, option two and three here is sort of under the assumption that maybe if we're. We're wanting to focus on some of these priority areas, I think it's exactly what you said, there, Yana, that this would, would. Not, this would have to go along with, and this is the right discussion or venue to be having the discussion around policy direction that would. Would indicate further investment into walkability and safety in in any areas that are prioritized for. For additional housing types. I think some of our other recommendations in the middle housing report sort of speak to. That, yes, there, there's opportunity, if you, especially if you want to get more innovative in allowing sort of non-conventional. Housing configurations throughout really all of your residential zones because the lots are so large. Where a, you know, small detached cottage type development. Could very much be integrated into your tree canopy if done. You know, done with thought and consideration and under existing, some of your existing critical area requirements. And I think, you know, the idea of incentivizing that in particular, that specific housing type at a citywide scale is something that. Not a whole lot of cities have have taken that approach, but I think it's a, it's an approach that can be unique and beneficial. Here in Lake Forest Park, again, if you're, if you're considering options beyond just a, just a two unit. Minimum requirement. I think that's, especially if you get outside of these, these areas that are highlighted on the map here. Makes a lot of sense as, as a housing type to to target, and not only. Due to the, the sort of the ability for those to integrate into the existing sort of fabric. But also that those are the types of dwellings that can, we talked about fee, fee simple lot splitting, those are the types of units that can lead. Could be ownership opportunities as well. Not that rental configurations of that don't exist. Or would be, you know, a negative thing, but it, it's more often that those types of housing are, are developed for ownership.
Can you share why not, not many other cities address this or talk about it? Is there downsides that we should be aware of? Can you talk about that?
No, I, I guess I was just saying that it's the, the approach of specifically incentivizing. You know, sort of the language that Yana put out there about incentivizing small cottage style dwellings. And being sort of very specific and targeted about it is not, is a relatively novel approach from what, what we've seen in other cities. Many cities do allow cottage housing, absolutely. And for the same reasons that, that you all are considering it or that we're discussing it now is that it. It does provide for potentially more flexibility in the way that it can be configured, especially on a larger parcel.
Yeah, the cottage would not be attached.
Which implies that they're separate, so you could get that same sort of.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think there are kind of. You know, hybrid middle housing styles, or you could have a fourplex, but that's sized a certain way. Right, so there's things like that, but I was personally, what, what I wrote up was based on more traditional. Attached small home type model. To be, to be considered.
I mean, I think one, one consideration as well is how this may interface with the new ADU requirements, since there is now a slightly increased. I can't remember exactly the square footage of the HB thirteen thirty-seven requirements, but at any rate, there is. You know, you, you could put two ADUs on a lot that has an existing house, achieve a similar. A similar sort of effect, at least with three units, if you have an existing house, two detached, small ADUs. So I think that when, i- i- if the city decides to go down this path, there may be some, you know, tweaking to. The zone zoning when you're drafting it to just sort of figure out how this would intersect or wouldn't intersect, or how it would be different from ADUs. Or more ADUs, or if, you know, because the definition of this type of housing may. Can get, if we're talking about small detached units, you know, it can kind of creep towards the existing standards for ADUs. But that's not a problem at all. It's just something to think about when you, if you go down the road of implementing such a thing.
I think our current code, about a year, a year and a half, we updated our ADU code. We do allow two ADUs on our property. One can be attached and one can be detached. So I don't know if the new. Law is going to require that we allow two detached units, but our current policies allow two ADUs for. Property. I think the, I, I like what you wrote. Yanni, but I, I, one of the things that. I've been thinking about as, as I read through the material was this idea. Again, that we're just having policies sort of level discussions here, not code level. But I'd like us to be really mindful of, you know, as we think about these incentives that. Might actually yield things that we're wanting to see based on the needs assessment and so forth, that we, that we. You know, do put other sort of limitations in like, it's sometimes. Good if you're building like twelve hundred square feet or something that is actually accessible for. ADA purposes, right, each of your place purposes, like for single level cottages versus. You know, a four story, three story, or I mean, a, a fourplex with three stories high and it ends up looking more like. Apartment block, which takes us away from the format scale and also increases the square footage, so we don't actually end up getting. I don't know that has any place that it fits in the policy side. Or if it's just going to happen at that code level side. Right, but that'd be my question, is there something that we need to signal at the policy side? To note that we're not simply looking at. Potential density that doesn't actually get us to that middle housing. Because I feel like if you have those incentives, it's also with some other, you know, like some other.
I, I think that's, I was gonna say that, that's, it maybe is a bit of a good segue to. Let me bring us back to some of the policy language, I do want to make sure we, we go through some of that, you know, any of the red lines or or things there that. That jumped out to you all. There is a policy currently as written, I think it's policy or, yeah, policy H four point two. Explore creating incentives to encourage universal design to maximize building lifestyle and accessibility. So that's certainly an approach through policy language, right? It's not, it's not requiring anything yet through code, but to explore the possibility. Of incentivizing or sometimes requiring, maybe that one of, one unit would be accessible. Or would be a ground floor level unit or a single story unit, if you are going to have a multi-story building, for example. So there's, that policy could be expanded upon, or if you think that that is sort of adequate from a policy standpoint. And I see, Jennifer, that you, you unmuted yourselves, you might have something you want to add to know that.
Yeah.
This was something you, you look into.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, kind of. Throughout the report, we were trying to be really mindful of the city's priorities with regards to. Tree canopy and critical areas and and all the priorities that you've kind of listed previously. And I think one thing. That is going to be important as part of the, the policy and then kind of the zoning discussion is understanding where. Flexibility can help, you know, meet some of those priorities. For instance, you know, in the commerce report on middle housing typologies. It says that all cottage housing, you know, is arranged around a central courtyard and faces each other and needs this width and this depth, but in practice. A lot of cottage cluster housing doesn't look like that, and enabling more flexible regulations about, you know. How things can be designed can help you, you know, build around trees, so you don't need to knock them down, things like that. But then. There may be some areas like height or. You know, lot coverage that is really important to, to you all and to the city of Lake Forest Park. And there's going to be that kind of balancing act between making sure that the rules are flexible enough that housing gets built. And, you know, your tree canopy isn't damaged, and also making sure that you're not, you know. Compromising the things that are, that are most important to the city.
That, that's helpful, and I think maybe it will be helpful to go through the policy language. I think. I was, when I was looking through this and when I was looking through the materials and watching recording for the last meeting. I kind of had some similar thoughts to Maddie about the need to really have some policy that. That builds upon some of the objectives we have. So when we have the discussion about option one, two, three, four, which increased density do we want? Some of us have had conversations and maybe it would be good to have a more philosophical discussion about what our policy goal is. Do we want? Increased density for the sake of density and hope that it looks accessible to people. With limited abilities, that it's affordable to people who need to have affordable housing. Or do we want to have increased density, but it beats those things? So. If it's the latter that we want, and I thought under House Bill eleven ten. For the increased middle housing accommodations. There are provisions that allow for cities to craft ordinances to require restrictive covenants, restricting. That property from not being affordable in the future for fifty years. And we had talked earlier, and it's earlier, we need to see, you know, are there models for what other municipalities have done or other jurisdictions have done? But at minimum, it seems like when we're having policy statements around increased density. They ought to be coupled with some policy statements around the type of density we want to see, because if we're going to allow greater density, which does. Change in some ways, the form and scale of the current development in the city. It would be great if that increased density was addressing some of the overarching policy goals we have and not. Totally decouple, yes, more density, yes, and separate programs to address affordability, yes. So let's marry them so that when we're having increased density per eleven ten, we're also. Having some requirements that it remain affordable and that it achieves some of the policy goals. Is that, am I misunderstanding eleven ten, or does it allow for that?
I don't think you're misunderstanding, it definitely allows for, for that. I think eleven ten sets. Sort of a minimum threshold of what cities need to, to do to comply with, with new middle housing. Allowing certain types of middle housing. The ways in which cities go about meeting those requirements or. Expanding upon them is, is very much still a local policy level decision. So. You know, the, the rules are pretty cut and dry in terms of what's required in eleven ten. A model code was released that sort of lays out very. A model code was released that sort of lays out very clearly what those minimum requirements are. Um, most cities are not going to be adopting those model codes because there's better ways to implement things at the local level. And this is exactly the the sort of the venue at this policy level to discuss, well, how do we do that and ensure that it's meeting our. Our goals as as a community, um, while still accomplishing some of these other objectives around affordability and housing choice and diversity, et cetera.
Okay, just just on that, the one point I want to make, just so that it's kind of in the recording and in the minutes. Um, is, this is section two A of House Bill eleven ten. So section one talks about all the increased density and types of middle housing you have to have. And then section two A says to qualify for the additional units allowed under subsection one of the section. The applicants, the person seeking to build, must commit to renting or selling the required number of units as affordable housing. Units must be maintained as affordable housing for a term of at least fifty years. And the property must satisfy that commitment and all required affordability and income eligibility conditions adopted by the local governments under this chapter. That's our one. A city must require the applicant to report a covenant or deed restriction that ensures the continuing rental of the unit subject to the affordability requirements. Consistent with the conditions of this chapter for period not less than fifty years. I looked at the model ordinance and it's garbage on this point. So you can only assume that. The Commerce Department didn't have the same goal as the legislature in passing this, and it seems to be. Deluded by an assumption that if you build more houses, they'll all be affordable, but that, of course, as we've discussed, is not what we've seen in this city. The houses are built and they're not affordable. Affordable houses torn down, two billion dollar homes are built, and all of a sudden, people are priced out of town. So I would like us to be thinking about policy and code changes that address that flexibility that the law gives us.
I think that that section is specifically referring to um an increased. Density in above the required minimum density. So, for example, the city is only required to allow. Two units per lot, but if you, but if you want to qualify for that subsection that's referred to in there, that subsection says that the city. Can allow more units under those conditions of uh of affordable. So essentially, it's saying that like, you're gonna have it, you have to allow a duplex. Uh, and if you uh allow, if you require that an additional. Uh, unit be made affordable under those deed restricted affordable terms that you just read, then you. Uh, have you you have to be allowed to allow um a triplex or fourplex or whatever it is under those, under that scenario.
I see. So I was misreading.
Well, you weren't misreading it, and I mean, it is a deed restricted affordable unit, but it was only, it was it was put in there as a way to. Increase the minimum density, so the city had the option to require an affordable unit if somebody wants to build more densely than the minimum, essentially.
And and just to point out that in for tier one in two cities, which, right, Lake Forest Park is a tier three city. Tier one in two cities are required to allow that sort of density bonus. Um, so and that's where that um that clause would would be applied. As a minimum requirement. That's that's not a requirement for Lake Forest Park, though it is a strategy that could be implemented for sure.
Yeah, and I think it goes back to those homeownership strategies that David was talking about earlier as well. I mean, deed or sec- do you do restrictions on homeownership? Are certainly a strategy um in that bucket, and, you know, we were talking this morning about um the city of Portland has a program, for example, that. Grants system development charge waivers under uh conditions that uh that like you're talking about, that a form uh house be. Uh, made uh affordable and resold at an affordable price. Um, and so that, you know, there there are those type of incentive programs, uh, for sure, that exist and 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 that you could explore.
So I I don't want to just shut off this this line of discussion if people want to continue, um. But I do think it's very important we we get through this list of goals and policies here as well. Um. Again, just for for timing sake, we want to make sure we we get the the policy language for the element into the the best shape possible. Um, whereas then following this, there's going to be, you know, a a lot more time to continue to work out specifics around middle housing implementation. Um, and not to say that those conversations are obviously relevant to the the policy discussion, so. Um, but maybe we we pivot to to going through some of the policy language if there are any specific. Questions or concerns about some of the new new policies in here, and there's only a few that are actually new, new. Um, most of them are are updating um existing language or, you know. To to align with with regional and state. Policy, but also we hope capturing some of the local uh intent and goals of of your community. So. Is that all right with with everyone? We sort of move in in this direction?
So I I had a, I had a um. Concern with what. Uh, H one point ten would would be when it says address impacts of past and present racially. Policy in practice is what that would. What kind of things were you talking, you know, what kind of things are being opened up?
And I assume that that's to address the. Equity requirements, diversity requirements, but we could expand on that since it's brand new. I I had that one.
Yes, so this is exactly one of the new policies. Um. It's it's in here because of those those requirements around addressing racially disparate impacts, um, issues around around equity. So in the the RDI report, the racially disparate impacts report that we provided to you, I think one of the most clear um. Examples of this is um our our racially exclusive covenants that are applied to. I actually relatively large number of parcels in in the city. Um, the state has put together a, you know, a map of where all these covenants have been applied historically and presently. Um, though they're no longer, you know, enacted, but. Um, so that that's one example, and and in in that specific instance, actually, there's there's other policy or state guidance that. Um, cities cannot restrict um middle housing or other options around affordability in these areas that have been historically. Um, impacted by the racially exclusive covenants. Yeah, some of the other findings in that in that assessment is, you know, that when we talk, look at. The race racial and ethnic uh mix of the city, a lot of. Um, by your BIPOC populations of the city are located in specific areas. Um, and so some of the this policy direction from the state and region is is to look into ways that you can provide. Further options for people of all backgrounds and race and ethnicities, and so that's another area that would be um. Sort of addressed under this policy. Uh, it doesn't get into those specific sort of local um. Issues that that at least as this policy is written. Um, that's something that that could be if you if you feel that there's more locally specific language that would be helpful in supporting. This um this goal uh. That said, that that report and the finding that will also be included in the background report of the element, so it'll be sort of combined into the entire housing element. Um, in your updated comp plan as well.
So you guys feel the addition of this is is totally necessary to check the box for the equity piece?
Uh, do we? Sorry, um, yes, so I would say that from a. In terms of the your state and regional and county requirements, they're they're going to want to see policy language related to to these issues. It doesn't have to be written specifically like this. This language is is. More or less uh taken from some of the the county uh policy direction, because you you didn't currently have a policy written around these um objectives. So there's definitely room to to rephrase or or again, be a little more locally um specific if there's a desire, but I do think that it would be. It might probably would be flagged when it goes to county um or state uh review of your comp plan update. There's a possibility of that.
Another one where I think we're hoping to learn a little bit more about, if I'm jumping further than. Then I'm looking at three point one one three eleven. Uh, we had that one flagged. If somebody has something before that, feel free to speak up. But we had highlighted that one again, it being a new policy, wanting to understand this one a little bit deeper.
I think I'm one of the people that kind of was. Asking questions about that the first time, the slide you showed earlier that kind of got at what's the toolkit, you know, for. For wrench protections, that was helpful to me, at least now I understand what this one meant. It's, it was a little bit vague. But I don't know if others want to dig into that more. I I feel like I got what I was asking about last time.
Any outstanding questions?
My was just on each one thing. That I wonder if there's been conversation. I didn't watch the story. There's been discussion on that piece, this idea of providing an adequate supply of land. Uh, and I didn't know what that meant. It felt like more burden on the city that's already running. Straps, particularly the other part, it's like, you know, he was saying. Something on development might incentivize these things, but it only does. I wasn't sure with that, but. What burden that put on the city if provided an adequate supply of land?
It was a little hard to hear. Were you asking, what is the city's responsibility to provide this land under that policy?
Quite, yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, this goes back to the the land capacity analysis with the, you know, the housing needs by income band that we talked about back in the fall. So essentially, um, it means zoned capacity. Uh, so, you know, we've done the analysis that shows that you have enough capacity uh as currently zoned. Uh, to to accommodate your growth target. This is asking, uh, this is sort of uh also coming down from the countywide policy. That the city has responsibility to to plan for its growth target. So if if that had showed that there wasn't enough land. Uh, to accommodate uh the growth target, then essentially, uh, the the this county and state would be asking to to densify or rezone some land. Um, you know, for dense enough development to meet that target, but but you you already have that capacity, so.
So are you saying that you'd like some language change that's maybe a bit, maybe it would be confusing? That it looks like the land actually needs to be satisfied by it as opposed to zoning it. You know, so you expand it or. Land capacity.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's that's something we've certainly um seen elsewhere. We can include. Here, so an adequate supply of land through zoning and development regulations to meet the city's growth targets.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
Any other callouts on this section? We spent some time on four point three.
Four point three?
Yeah, that was also one of your added slides.
Yes, yeah, around special needs, how's their permanent supportive housing and emergency shelters. Are there, yeah, still questions on this one?
I think it's kind of like the one I'll just talk about, our code already provides for this, right? So this is just updating the language a little bit. Is that right?
Yes, that's that's correct. Um, as far as far as I understand, yes, there your code does allow for. For these housing types. Um, so it's it's just a policy to to sort of state the intent to to maintain that.
Is that one uh follow up question? We did talk about this on Thursday, sort of relates to this. I was curious, um. Down on fact, we knew there's a big King County Housing Authority, you know, housing complex. And what types of tools? Could we use to ensure that regardless of what King County Housing Authority may decide at some point in the future? That that land that it sits on would be dedicated to. You know, affordable supportive housing. I don't know their income band, so I don't know the details of what category that lands in. But like, what could, right now, I don't think anything in the zoning code would. Stop King County Housing Authority from deciding to offload that property, build. Affordable housing somewhere else and sell it at market rate to somebody who's going to build high-rise condos that have a view of the lake. Right? So what tools might we have if we wanted to protect that? Existing kind of the use that's there, even if the current owner would have failed. Not that I think they would, but.
Hypothetically. It's a good question. I think first and foremost, it's maintaining a close relationship with your housing authority and. Ensuring that they know that you want this to may be maintained as affordable housing and understand. Maybe what the city could do to to ensure that happens. Um, you know. Could be, you know, the the extreme would be the city could look to to purchase that land and and preserve it. You could, of course, through through zoning or development regulations, ensure that any new development on that land can't exceed sort of a certain threshold. That's sort of a very simplistic way of ensuring you don't get the high-rise development like you just said. Um, but I think that the more important thing to note, and this is a. Thing that many cities struggle with, especially cities that lack in resources that sort of focus on or, you know, have staff or resources dedicated to. To housing specifically, um, is is utilizing your housing authority as a as a partner and then making sure that you're doing what. Um, what you can to to support them and vice versa, and making sure that your needs are known to them. Um. That's so that's that's sort of a, that satisfies your your question. Um, there's probably a number of approaches that a city could take to to preserve that sort of housing. Um, a lot of it comes down to um. To resources, though, being being put towards the preservation. Um, if that is, you know, coming out of its um its affordability uh requirement. Limits and housing authority does look to pivot. I don't know.
The best thing we could do in the short term is to add some language that encourages the city to basically take care of that relationship. To ensure that we maintain that type of housing in our city limits. In perpetuity.
You know, it's funny, I wrote a suggested condition partner with blah, 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 then I flipped the page and saw. H four point five.
Yeah, and so exactly, we have this this policy here, which sort of focuses on partnerships. Um. There's nothing that would stop you from adding something that's a little more specific, though. If you want to say, you know, maintain partnerships with your. Um, you know, with your housing authority, your housing partners to ensure. Um, existing affordable housing is preserved in the long term.
Yeah, we could maybe add some specificity to four point five or something, so we'll think about that.
Okay.
Uh, time check, we have about fifty minutes. Seems like a lot, but it's not. Uh, any other comments on both sections?
Um, we skipped one that we had covered, and that's at the very beginning about the background of the legislation and so forth. Without becoming redundant with the volume two background.
Yeah, the planning concept.
But some context before it dives into policies.
Yeah, right.
Uh, volume two also has, I got under.
Right, Mark, we sort of discussed, don't, not not at length here, but just at a high level, explain that this is addressing a lot of these new. Legislative changes and requirements, and more details can be found in in volume two. All right.
Uh, I I may have unintentionally taken that section and moved it to volume two when I was revising the volume two, so. We definitely could paste the that introduction back in here, um, so that.
No, no, it was, it was an open question, because the um, the existing introduction is quite brief. In short, I wanted to, there was sort of a question, do we want to expand upon this to sort of. Again, highlight a lot of these these major changes to your housing element. Um. And so the feedback I think we got was, yes, not as detailed as in volume two, but. Um, to highlight a lot of these these legislative changes that are impacting this new new housing element.
They couldn't even just be hyperlinked. They couldn't even just be hyperlinked and listed as another political list of drivers that inform our, you know, these policies. For readability.
I like that idea. Um, so just sort of looking through our discussion guide, just want to make sure we're we're covering everything. I know you sort of flagged the pieces that you wanted to discuss, and it sounds like we've we've hit on all of them that are policy related. There any other discussion related to, you know, supply and diversity in the language in here, which sort of hits on. You know, allowing a variety of residential densities, housing choice, et cetera. Or the the housing form and scale, which is another, I know, major deviation from previous policy language. But it sounds like maybe all of those discussions were were had last week, and no, no further sort of questions needed or or discussion needed?
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't really go, like, if you think back to that options table, we didn't really talk about, okay, well. How many options do you want to provide? And how, you know, how dense or whatever, or. Getting into, well, what would we allow in those areas that are close to boundary or five, two versus what we do somewhere else? So we we didn't get that far in the weeds yet. And I don't know if that's part of what you're asking, because that really does imply something about the diversity of housing types. Say, well, we're willing to go here, but maybe we maybe we don't want, you know. Some of the models, the bigger, higher kind of density, you know, housing model might not feel suitable in all our, you know. Even in even in those seventy, the uh. The zones, if you kind of call it out in options two and three, so. Just to be clear, we didn't go there, we didn't say yes, no, yes, no, the different types. The some of those questions are actually in the survey that's out to the community right now, so that that'll be interesting to see what we hear there. But just wanted to clarify, we didn't go that deep on Thursday.
Yeah, and I think my my question was more, you know, at this policy level, which is staying. Pretty general in terms of it's not calling out those specific housing types. And that was that was intentional to allow for that continued discussion and and, you know, as as the city works towards actual code amendments. Those discussions can can continue to happen. So I so I guess the question is more, do you all feel comfortable with these policies as written? That it sort of gives you that space to continue exploring that while also not. Sort of shutting off the options where you to choose to, you know, allow a wider diversity of housing than. Maybe originally thought. And and that was sort of the intention in craft, in the way we crafted these was to to show the direction to allow for that. Variety and then the diversity of choice without being too prescriptive.
I think so.
Good, yeah. What was the last, there was one that we talked about at the end, and I can't find it, it had to do with affordable housing. Covenant support of housing, just to be expanded to.
Oh, that was what we're talking about in the minutes?
Yes, yes, and I.
It wasn't one point seven?
Okay, so maybe it was, maybe it was.
That was kind of also to just like for the use of five.
I thought there was one more.
So that this is one point seven.
We're one point nine.
Or, I'm sorry. What we can.
Yep, which we we discussed that one.
I still don't, I still don't, you know, in one point ten, I don't understand what it would need to address the impacts of the past and present. Racially exclusive and discriminatory policies and practices, what that would actually play. I understand that you said that, you know, that you pointed out. But I don't, I don't know what that would would look like in practice.
So so a lot of the direction.
Things that would be, you know, suggested.
I can. Jump in, David, if that works.
Sure, yeah.
There are a a bunch of different ways that that you all could discuss doing this, there's examples in other cities, one of the. The the main things that that commerce looks at is making sure that. Neighborhoods that have historically had. Racially restricted covenants or that were historically redlined, aren't maintaining the same patterns of segregation today. And a lot of what that means is making sure that, you know, a lot of times those neighborhoods are the ones that have. Been preserved as as, you know, ones where you could only build a single family home, that's part of why. You know, they're requiring at least duplexes in all cities, but then, you know, making sure that there is a variety of housing types. That reflect cultural needs and preferences, I know in Portland, there was a. A survey of households of color that found that, you know, they prefer to have porches and front doors, so they're, you know. Kind of understanding what typologies serve some of these communities, working with nonprofits, affordable housing developers. That specifically serve these communities to figure out, you know, what kind of support they need, either regulatory or otherwise. There are a lot of different approaches you can take, but the idea is just to kind of look at these past patterns. Of segregation and make sure that they're not continuing to be codified in your zoning or other codes.
Well, I'm for sure for that, I mean, any, I would be completely against. Anyway, which to talk about. But I just don't see, you know. I don't see how. And I, and I mean, the the. I don't know what needs to be done, because the people who live there are not the same people. And I I I'm not sure how pointing out a specific community when they're not the same people. And have the same values, I I I just, it concerns me. I I'm happy to have, you know, I mean, I I would prefer to have just like a, you know, it's, this is how all the whole city is treated. In terms of everybody has can have up to, you know, the the duplex and the two eighty years and have it just across the board.
So I I I think this, if I'm if I'm understanding this right, is it's it's putting a policy there. That says that we don't want this. And it's just basically saying, we want to be inclusive, we don't want to be racist, we don't want to discriminate. So, we're that way now, but maybe ten years from now, or twenty or fifty years from now. We'll have another group of people that won't think the way that we are thinking now, so just having this as a as a policy writing. Can help the future preserve our our thinking. I mean, I, this is not saying that, you know. That we do this now, and that we need to stop, that's not what it's saying. It's just saying that we don't want this to happen.
Right, so I'm just asking what specific steps would would address the impacts of the past and present. Well, present, present racially exclusive, there shouldn't be that, and if there is, we need to deal with that and, you know, get that. Right now, so there shouldn't be any present racially exclusive discriminatory policies and practices. And I don't know how, like, what exactly would would come from saying that we're going to address the impacts of the past.
So I think it's, there's, you're right, in the cities and the policies, there isn't anything right now that's. You know, going to be explicitly racist or promoting segregation. But what happens in a lot of these instances in cities all over the country, Lake Forest Park not unique in this. Is that the the past patterns result in present segregation, not because the law's requiring segregation. But because. The the code was never, there were never attempts to address. The segregation that happened in the past and the policies that intentionally or not caused it. So, you know, it's this, this isn't about like kicking people out of their homes, you know, in the or anything, this is about just saying like. Uh, you know, there's similar language with commerce about neighborhood character, how neighborhood character. Is a term that sounds very innocuous, people like their neighborhoods, they like the character of their neighborhoods. But it gets used to mean we don't want any change, which a lot of times is a way of. You know, keeping these past practices in place that lead to present segregation. Um, so it's it's just kind of, you know, like I said earlier, there's a lot of ways to to try and address it. But that's why it's in here, and that's kind of why it's it's being asked of cities by commerce that they look into these. Uh, patterns.
And if I could just add on to that, and Jennifer spoke to us a bit as as well already, but right, this is really getting at. At the root of also sort of the middle housing push in in the state of Washington and and across. The country is the fact that for for decades, right, in many, many cities, the only housing type that was able to be built was a single family home. And due to those those policies and and regulations, but also other, you know, other. Issues that prevented a lot of minority populations from. Being able to purchase those homes meant that these neighborhoods became racially exclusive over time. Whether or not they had explicitly racist, you know, policies or covenants applied to them. And so it's those historic impacts that this is, the state has made a decision that we need to direct directly address this. Even if there's no, you know. Specific racist intent within existing policy or or, you know, city leadership or communities, it's the these past. Patterns that are are that the state is saying we have a duty to to undo those those patterns of the past. And so when you ask what can be done, the, you know. Allowing for more housing choice in your neighborhoods has been said, this is one of the most important or most impactful ways you can can do this. Because it will allow for more affordability, it'll allow for more housing choice, it'll allow for you potentially to be more responsive to different community groups' needs. As Jennifer was saying, and so in doing that, you can, you you're opening up more possibilities for a more diverse population. To live within your communities, whereas they have not had that opportunity necessarily in the past. Um, so. Sort of the short of that is that by. Sort of bringing in middle housing or other housing choice into your into your your existing residential zones, that's one of the major ways the state is saying you can address this. Not the only way, but at a at a high level, one of the the biggest steps that can be taken.
Idea totally worth seeing about this point. And I think it's clear from our consultants, why it's in there, what the. What the background is on it. So I'm wondering if we want to try and massage the original moments, it's not. Yeah, I mean, at the end, though, we have been advised that something to this.
Not sure, we're smothering it. At this sitting is the, I mean, like, if if there, if you want to spend some time trying to think about some language to bring back, I think, that's fine. I guess I don't read as much into this as I think what you're picking up on, I just see this, you know. As we're considering these changes and things like middle housing. We can't just say, oh, except in those neighborhoods, you know, except those the biggest lots and things. Because those are frankly the ones that were the rules of the racial covenants and have led to these big lots that can only be afforded by rich people. Or, you know, rich by comparative status. So I think this is to remind us that we can't sort of conveniently make choices. That kind of exacerbate the patterns of housing and who lives where, you know, and instead, let's mix it up a bit, let's. Add some housing types, choices scale, which translates to price. Which then also makes it more accessible to people of many different incomes and. And we know that there are very clear relationships between income and race, quote unquote, that doesn't mean there aren't very poor white people. And it doesn't mean there aren't very wealthy BIPOC people, but overall, and I think that shows up in the demographics of our of the report, so. That's just how I think about this policy, and I, so I don't have a problem with it, because I think it's, yeah, we should make sure that we're not sort of. Reinforcing the patterns that have led to the way our city looks now. In a way, you know, without actually acknowledging that, you know, there's some, there's some. Bad background to that, and we actually have ways to change some of those patterns, so they don't just continue forever. You know, so that's kind of how I think about it, but I would welcome you to the brains and language. For us to talk about at another meeting, if you if you. Feel like we can find a way to make this meet its intent for what the state's telling us and the county's telling us, but. We maybe tweak the language a bit, so that would be my suggestion.
Uh, we're in our last thirty minutes here.
Yeah, well, so I think if that sort of wraps up our discussion on the policy language for now. Then we can spend the next, the last thirty minutes answering any further questions or having some more discussion around the middle housing work, if there are. So I know we didn't get to the the critical area exemption piece, which I I believe was a question or a topic that you all discussed on Thursday. So, yeah, if folks are ready for it, we can hop over, back over to that.
Yeah, just to, just to. Move us forward on that, we we talked about two things on that, like critical areas exemption, I think we had a pretty strong sense. Around the table that. We, you know, we have no intention or desire to reduce any of our environmental protections. In the in the name of, you know, just adding density, so it's like, okay, let's see, you know, let's add more housing types, but. We're not interested in trying to, you know, lessen our environmental protections in any way. But we also heard from Mark, and I had already seen this too, from that bill, the trailer bill. That refers to, yeah, portions, the red text, I was really glad to see that, honestly, the address, because I thought it was providing kind of a. Totally unnecessary loophole, uh, which cities to use. So, but if you could maybe just summarize that change, just so we have a little clearer.
Yeah, Andrew, would you mind doing that? Sure, yeah, so, um, if you go to the next slide, uh, so on, in the original legislation as written. There was a provision that cities could exempt all critical areas from, just ignore the map on the left for now, it's talking about the map on the right. These just show all your critical areas, and the yellow parcels are any parcel that intersects any critical area or its buffer. And originally as written, HB eleven ten allowed cities to exempt the entire acreage of all of those parcels. From increased density under. um, uh, HB eleven ten, so increased middle housing density. Um, but that was now changed as of this month or last month, I think. Um, so that the city can now only exempt the acreage of the critical area itself uh, from from increased density. So, you know, you already have protections on developing in your critical areas. Um, so essentially it would it would kind of reflect a continuation of that, that, you know, where where there's a critical area, you can um, prevent additional density from being developed, but on the rest of the parcel, um, you you can't blanket exempt the the entire parcel. And it's especially, I don't know, like Lake Forest Park is obviously a city with a lot of critical areas. So I think this one, like you said, Yana, is especially was especially weird here as a sort of loophole that uh, is now eliminated. So uh, that that goes back to our sort of recommendation report to, you know, maintain your, the existing critical area, um, protections that you already have, uh, like you indicated, that cities not interested in changing anyway. Um, but sort of apply those same restrictions um, to development of middle housing. And and I'll just mention here that the alternative compliance path was something that we were directed to study as part of the middle housing grant that uh, and work we've we've been doing for you. Um, it's it's also quite complicated and essentially doesn't provide as much protection for your critical areas as just your existing critical area restrictions or or modifying them. So uh, there's a lot of detail in the report too on that, if you if you want to get into it.
Does anybody have any additional thoughts from our discussion last week? They're all talking about.
I I have a question.
Yeah.
On what this means. So let's say you have a critical area and you're trying to get a reasonable economic use exemption. Do you think you have a right to have two units and you you are applying for your reasonable economic use exemption for two units? Or if you can build a single house, if you subtract out the critical areas and their buffers, um, is is that sufficient or or is this a gray area? Just just unclear to me.
Good question. Jennifer, do you want to title it?
Um, well, I was thinking it it is, I think, a bit of a gray area. Um, from, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the economic use exemption is usually used in cases where you can't really build anything on a lot. Um,
Yes, that's usually the case. In other words, nothing could be built to code.
Right. Um, so I think in that reasonable economic use exemption, um, you're obviously because you're trying to limit what can be built because it's a sensitive area. Um, because it's a critical area, I think that new language from HB twenty-three twenty-one, where you can exempt building in those critical areas uh, would apply, like, I don't think you have to allow a duplex in a critical area. I will say, we kind of, we suggest that you consider it just because a duplex, you know, a small duplex, you could limit it by size, but a small duplex wouldn't have, um, significantly more impact than a single family home if you're already going to allow a single family home. But that's, I don't think that that would be required.
Thanks. Um, yeah, that makes sense because we basically say you can have about a thousand square foot, including the garage. And you can have two stories, so it could be a duplex, if you think about it that way.
Mm-hmm, right.
I think with as you say, as with all of these new legislative requirements, consult with your your city attorney as well, um, when it comes down to those those sort of nuances, but that that is our understanding, so.
Okay, thank you. And of course, I understand that.
Yeah.
I just thought you might know some sense of interpretation that you've heard about.
Melissa, have your hand up?
I do, because I'm just trying to, as we're talking about putting, you know, we're comparing a duplex to a single family home. If it's, you know, a single family home is, you know, twelve hundred square feet, and then you're having a duplex and like, maybe those two units are, I don't know, I I'm trying to envisage this in my head, but I don't, I guess I'm not really in agreement with the argument that there's not really any difference between a duplex and a single family home in a critical area. You're basically doubling the residential units on there and therefore you're doubling, you know, the amount of people that are living on the property and the amount of traffic that will be coming in and out of the property. Um, and these are the things I think of when I think of putting a duplex in a critical area. I don't see, it it doesn't seem like it's apples to apples to me. That's just my personal opinion on that.
Well, one thing I think that we, um, when we were exploring the, um, the the uh, example parcels of where middle housing might fit, um, we were looking very carefully outside of critical areas, knowing that there is a lot of, uh, you know, in- interest in protecting them. And uh, even outside of critical areas, there's still quite a bit of space, especially like you see here on this map, just for some examples in these. Although these have, you know, a lot of tree canopy and other constraints uh, along the creek, you know, there there are a lot of, you know, acres in your city that are outside the critical area. So, so I I mean, yeah, but I think whether or not you want to allow a duplex, you know, through the reasonable economic use exemption, um, there's still, most of the area we're talking about allowing uh, middle housing is is not constrained by critical areas. And that was another sort of factor in the choice of of areas we were recommending there. So, I mean, I totally understand, you know, the the cities, um, your thoughts on that and the city's desire to to preserve those areas. And I think it doesn't preclude you from, you know, exploring, like we were saying before, innovative ideas for where you put things without having to necessarily um, impact those areas.
Thanks.
Any other questions on on this piece? Right. One, just wanted to to point out, and this is getting beyond the policy discussion, um, but sort of setting up maybe some of the future discussions that that you all and and we will be having um, around code amendments. Uh, is this this discussion around lot coverage ratio, right? So part of our analysis was looking at feasibility around middle housing in in various areas. And one of the, you know, the regulatory levers that can make a really large impact is is lot coverage. Um, so this map right here, right, is showing, this is just an example of three or four units. Um, yeah, we have similar maps for for a duplex, uh, or up to a sixplex, I believe, um, in the report as well. Um, and so one, under your current residential zoning, right, there's a max, sort of varies across your zones of twenty-five to thirty-five percent lot coverage. Under um, new requirements, it won't be able to um, have a requirement lower than forty percent. Uh, what this map here is showing is if the city were to consider, in some cases, maybe going higher than that fifty percent, these maps are showing where then these different middle housing types would become feasible from a lot coverage standpoint. And so I think in our analysis, that was really one of the biggest biggest levers in terms of of, if you're really trying to to support production of more of these housing types uh, that that you could could decide on. So I think, doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be a decision made today. This doesn't need to be included in policy language. Um, but will be a consideration, I think, an important point of discussion going forward.
Is on this point, David, so the model code says that, but we're not obligated to follow the model code if there's not a requirement for that in the statute itself. Is that correct? Or does the statute or some other requirement prohibit recurring zoning that has a maximum of thirty-five percent?
So, correct, you you don't have to follow them or adopt the model code. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, though, but I believe that this this is coming from from a mandate.
Uh, I'm not entirely sure. Do you remember, Jennifer?
I'm double checking before I say.
Two minutes.
Maybe I should, I should bite my tongue there. Um, apologies. But but nevertheless, it is is a potential decision or direction the city can can choose on. One of those those code uh, levers that could be, could be impactful.
And I think from my perspective, and you know, curious how the other commissioners think, but as we kind of work through this, I really want to be thoughtful about development for the sake of development versus development that beats certain of policy goals. And I don't think, I'm just opening up the whole city to as much development, to encourage as much middle housing as possible. We don't have other levels to pull, to keep it affordable and to keep addressing some of the other policy goals we've had. It's necessarily the right path to take.
I mean, just to build on what Sam said, it's it's like I was saying earlier, I don't think we all care. I mean, one of these symptoms can be for a particular lot, maybe with no critical areas and lends itself, maybe one of the concessions in the review of the planning department is that it can exceed the thirty-five percent, you know, rendered, or it can, you know, be more than the twelve hundred square foot footprint, because you get twenty-five hundred square foot footprint or something, like, I think we just have to think about what Sam is, you know, has said again several times this evening, and that is, you know, sort of where's the character message there? So that it is, there's reciprocity, we're allowing versus saying, let's just blanket, maybe increase this to make it easier for everyone to build and do more in the film. So I I I would just like to say that. I would want to consider that citywide.
I I agree with that for for the most part. The one thing I think we have to acknowledge though is like, that, you know, the twenty-five percent that we have are on the biggest lots. That's in the R twenty thousand. So we kind of have this, like, that again, sort of discourages, you know, even slight until in the areas that probably, you know, let's ignore the critical areas for a second, it probably accommodated the best in some ways in terms of just.
Saying on this map that the largest lots aren't.
What I'm saying is the twenty-five percent applies to our twenty thousand zone. So those are the biggest, you know, those are the the biggest lots that can't be subdivided. And there we have the strictest limit on coverage. Whereas then you get to like the R ten thousand, I think it's probably thirty-five percent and whatever. My point is, we're that's an example of a development regulation that again perpetuates these, you know, big lots with single houses that aren't really open to any kind of redevelopment, kind of gets at that, you know, is stored inequities. Now, in some cases where you have a lot of critical areas, it's smart to have a pretty low, you know, coverage. But not all of our our twenty thousands really have that issue in the same way. So I think we need to be mindful of this. I totally agree. We shouldn't blanket, we shouldn't blanket really anything except the things that tells we have to, like, a lot of these ones. But I don't think we should take this discussion sort of off the table. Because it, I don't know, like, kind of piggybacks on some of the past decisions that led to the types of giant lots with one house on that we have now.
And I don't, I don't disagree with you, Yanni. I I I I you know, spending time in our community, I'm sure we have seen it, there are some lots that really lend themselves well to certain kinds of projects, some of those that don't, but because it's hard to build the cherry thing within a zone with, you know, it's the majority of of lots in this area, you know, there's a consideration of the critical areas or canopy or whatever, there's an environmental stewardship aspect. And so that's why I think it could be a good cure, I think, so planning department is equipped to evaluate the actual parcel within those larger zones to say it's a good candidate, right? We're not worried about the critical area or, but but I I I agree, I think that you know, we just have to keep in mind there are many lots within zones that lend themselves or don't lend themselves to.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I was gonna say, um, our intention to showing the map was not necessarily recommend that you go fifty percent everywhere, but just to see what the, where the difference would be the greatest, uh, as far as where you might want to select. Um, uh, select that. And, you know, again, as I pointed out earlier, in the, in the uh, sort of area near the lake, um, in the south part of town, just above the southern gateway, that there are already a lot of parcels that exceed thirty-five percent, so that that could factor in too. But yes, of course, um, you know, uh, you have to be careful about where you, uh, where you would get the most impact and um, and achieve all your other goals. I see that. Your hand is up, Melissa.
I'm just thinking back to a couple of years ago when we were already doing all that work on, like, you know, the ADUs and the DADUs, and we were discussing things like, you know, surface permeability and um, storm drainage. And to me, when I look at this, it's like, well, I I I thought that we had valid reasons for saying there can only be so much area of impermeable surfaces to protect the water around in the area, especially considering it, you know, a lot of it drains into Lake Washington. Um, and also, you know, from what I understand and what we discussed, we don't have the capacity to even add on to our storm drainage. Like, that's, that's something that we would have to take on ourselves as a city, and we don't have that capacity right now. So when you're talking about increasing to fifty percent, that's what goes through my mind. It goes through, it, I'm saying, well, that makes no sense based on what we've been discussing for the last couple of years. Um, from a financial standpoint, from what our city can absorb, and also from an environmental standpoint, from what the lake should be absorbing.
Uh, I just want to say I totally agree with you, Melissa, on that point. And I think there are also incentives that could be built in around green stormwater infrastructure that's different than, you know, pipes and ponds. Uh, one of the things that does make me feel sort of less nervous is that most modern development codes do require a lot more on stormwater than what was required when all Lake Forest Park was built out. So that's good, but I, but that reminded me, if I I thought about that before, I'd like to see this have some really strong incentives around green stormwater infrastructure that can handle some of those functions without the city having to build more pipes and pipelines.
Hmm.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think that this certainly intersects with a lot of those other, uh, you know, development policies, uh,
Yep.
And and, yeah, and and isn't a blanket, a blanket thing at all.
And and sort of reiterate what you were saying before, Andrew, that this bringing up this, these maps in this discussion was not not meant to say, you know, city should consider doing this across the whole city. It's really just to to begin opening up this discussion. I think this is exactly the direction. It should go, and and as has been said, you know, how do you balance your your different goals and objectives around housing, but also balancing that with with um, other major priorities at the city. And so, understanding, you know, from a, truly from a sort of a housing feasibility perspective, lot coverage can make a really big difference. If you're going to maybe go that route in cer- in certain cases, tying on specific incentives or or may allowing, if you're going to allow a bonus up to a higher lot coverage that comes with specific requirements around affordability, stormwater mitigation, et cetera, um, those those are options that that could be on the table. Or not. It's it's ultimately, of course, up to you all in what direction gets taken, so. And and knowing we only have ten minutes left in this this call, we're obviously not gonna not gonna sort out the or finish this discussion tonight, but thought I'd I'd open it up because we seem to be at the end of our, sort of the rest of our discussion items.
Great. Thank you, guys. Um, with one or two other things that we need to address before we adjourn here, but thank you for that.
Absolutely. Um, we have, if, I guess if we're all all wrapped up for the housing discussion, um, we can leave you to the the rest of your business unless there's any other questions from your end.
Yeah, appreciate the work you guys did inviting us through that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely, yeah. Talk into, take care.
Um, but what we'll do to add some to your housing, um, you have to strike out underlined, you have the volume two with fuller data. And so we're going down that road with housing. And so we're going down that road with housing based on that feedback, similar to transportation. That it will evolve until we get to, here's the document. So there's always opportunity to further tweak the language and so forth, but, uh, now Leland is heading off to that next generation of strikeout underlines for those two, um, products. Those are policies to back that analysis. So when I meet with Christina, when she gets back, and the, the subconsults, next steps, next meeting, housing may or may not be on that agenda, but they're heading towards, uh, hopefully May or June. I'll strike out underlined all the elements. But if any issues come up or questions, feel free to give the staff, you know, continue the conversation, but not necessarily bring that back for a large chunk of the. Okay, and, so which is an introduction to the next topic, transportation. We are there, the transportation, they've heard us, they've asked their questions, all we need are the strikeout underlies. Uh, and hoping when Christina gets back tomorrow, she has an update, and maybe that, we are one of the. Yeah, which would be, not necessarily works, but they've been going through the growth policies on transportation, seeing the results of uh, the comments they've heard and how it's reflected, those grant up and. We can never have enough, so. Survey through the seventeenth.
Right, and then are there other activities that are, are staging now?
Um, the one that is, uh, scarily coming is a public hearing at planning. When is that? Before you make a formal recommendation to the city council.
Right, but are, are we not, I, we, early on in one of the interviews, that we talked about some other outreach efforts, whether it's farmers markets or center, we're.
Right.
Yeah, there was several time.
Christina talked about that and the need to do more, 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 and so forth, then we went right into survey, and so that's so that, that's where we're at, right now.
It's just something nice to talk with her, to like, how can we know?
And next steps is April and May is, I don't know, right now.
I think we all talked about, like, there's a thing about it, considering, like, a ship, or like, I don't know, especially in that on a contract.
And so the, the, the two parts that I'm more focused on, just for Dan, with the completing and compiling certain, that's major, and it's live now, that Kevin, he's leaving. Advertised to the healthcare. And so, where, on the seventeenth, it then becomes, what does it all mean? The results in a ton of fashion that gives you guys feedback, so that's my main focus. Then, uh, the city council, through the deputy mayor, uh, strongly suggests a public hearing at the planning commission before recommendations. In addition to the public hearing that's required at city council. Uh, and then we talked with the consultants about what does that mean as far as timeline and public participation and recommendation, and is July available? Uh, and it's always been too soon to have that conversation, we don't want to have it in February, March. Now that it's April giving, uh, maybe there's a check-in coming our way. Uh, where we, we put those steps onto paper and do that. As most of, uh, asking that question, whether it's. Cause then we really will, July. So we're getting close, I don't know that it's nice tonight, but I think we should start thinking about it and not coordinate with Christina.
That's something we'll talk about, go ahead.
Could I, um, could I just add that, um, I think that, uh, what the Parks Board did is they had, they had a handful of slides, and so Parks Board members went to, um, like PTA meetings, or the farmer's market, or things like that, it was an informal kind of system, people just volunteer, but they had a packet of material, um, to bring. So, uh, I think based on, once you see the survey results, you can kind of think about a high level. If, if members of the planning commission wanted to do this, you could think about a high level set of slides that talks about some, like, some of the, just the introductory material that you guys digested on. Uh, what is a comprehensive plan, and what are some of the issues that have been mandated by the state legislature, that kind of thing? So, uh, I, I think, by the way, the survey's great, but I just wanted to say, uh, one tool could be just a series of a few slides that, uh, planning commission members could use. If you want to go to talk to your neighbors, or go to the farmer's market, or go to some of the events that, uh, that might be going on in the city.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a really quick turnaround time from the data collection to going out. So if I heard you correct, you'll, you'll chat with Christina, maybe we can have a, a slide or a timeline to really get a better understanding of the secrets of events and. To any extent that we're willing to go do some of those things, I don't know, because we want to think about your capacity and, and your willingness to go table lead or do something like that. Um, something to be thinking about over the next month.
So we won't wait, look, I know she has ideas. If she were here tonight, she would do two things, talk about that, forecast what she needs, if remaining to, but also give you some insight of what they're seeing on the survey already. And as far as participation, numbers, the but she had a, a family obligation to get that. So, we'll get that to you, anything them can do outside the meeting setting to inform you, I don't think we need to wait for May eighth. Uh, but, uh, by then, SCJ's administering this survey, and it's all electronic, they did this on the line.
Yeah.
Um, and so the, of what I call compiling, and then into a format that you can digest, I think is very important to talk to me. You know, cause then if you do these other steps test that feedback is what's written on paper reflective of that.
Is it, does anybody have, or I mean, I can make a list if you guys want to send them to me of ideas of where we can go of actual things, because I know we're seeing probably like PTA meetings, but I don't have kids that are in school, I don't know about PTA meetings. Uh, so I don't know if there's specific suggestions, then we have a list, and I can compile a list, and then we sign up for what we want to do, I just, uh, just kind of thinking about us with going out in public. So I, I don't know, over the next week or two, if you guys think of a specific event, you want to shoot it my way, then I can put a list together, we can talk about it. But it just feels like this is coming really quick, and, uh, we probably want to be prepared to do that, who's gonna go there, who's willing to do that.
I guess my question would be, would we sit at a table and have materials to do, or what does that mean?
Yeah, I think that's kind of part of the discussion, is, is some of the data and the feedback that we get.
Yeah.
She has tools, that, that was the discussion that we have, whether we're us, those have been doing this a long time, early in our careers, we sat in front of the grocery store, because there weren't enough tools. There are a lot of tools now, it's just have those ideas, now, we just have to have her share that, so that you can take advantage of that.
Not just the I don't know, maybe you can use ages, but the graphic, like, eighty percent of the survey responded to sixty years or older, so then. Did you need to get any important for volunteers, readers, stuff?
Uh, not tonight, no, it's a bandwidth issue. Day, this is Thursday, at the B and City Council, we'll see what they're, I'll give them the deep background last week. And then we'll see, um, if they're gonna waste three readings.
Okay.
Oh, go forward. We have the feedback we need, now we need that resolution. But with, uh, with the worry that if, if everything goes well, this coming meeting, meeting after, we need to pivot towards, who's interested? And we've, uh, indicated it's up to three from the planning commission, because the board should, up to three, the C N C, a treaty board. Uh, and then talk about a student, uh, member, and then members at large from the community. And part, part is, we won't have much time to actually bring nominations back to council, it will take as long as it takes. We did it right, but the quicker we do task one of that scope, we'll get to the actual work. In April, I still do the R Q and the circulation and selection, so, right now, we don't have. Tonight, it's just that. Yeah, and now we have some current planning issues that we have to address, but, but it's going, it's going great, I just forget which day it is, so it's just. Uh, but that's an important part, so the, the next update item is the climate action plan. Um, Sarah was here, Thursday night, if, if, we have shared that with the consultants, mostly in transportation. The important part to remember is that's an action implementation document. Whatever policies in there is an easier discussion, because it's, there's not much of it in there, and it's very important, and can be full and will be put in the periodic update, so we're on track for that, but that, like, everything else has to go to city council and get left.
In the, in the beat up to this, we'll be marching forward to provide our recommendations to city council, um, for the update. But it would be nice to know, should we immediately start working on, uh, oh, recommendations for housing to bring that, you know, my answers are kind of like that versus, you know, working on some of these other aspects, so.
Yeah, the clarification to that, if you have more time. Can, if you focus on, it's important as to, as chicken and egg, can't really get through the policy without seeing the other end of it.
Yeah.
But the discussion really is what policies do we need to put for language now? The, the House Middle Land and Ten Middle Housing Development Regulations, part two, until next June. It was separate rant, we will get that specific, but we have worked on it, but we're not waiting that Zach wants quick. And it informs, do we have the right policy? So it seems like it's all blending, but don't get the impression middle housing has to be done at this pace um, through June, July, just to see if you're comfortable with it, make sure the policy's good, we grab it, and move on quickly. Find it out in that hand.
Um, still, no, so, so, I'm, it's no. The agenda for next meeting, we're gonna talk about transportation, climate. Um, it's also the public aspect, the timeline, and the, um, survey.
Uh, uh, would you like to prioritize public participation and surveys? The main topics of meeting, and then you will have, fair, fair strike out on like, transportation.
Yeah.
Not sure we'll have anything to explain.
Okay, I'd agree, yeah. Any thoughts on the survey, some issues?
Don't want a motion to, in terms of.
Bye, Melissa.
Bye. Thank you.
Good night.